I'd like to welcome participants to the hybrid meeting of February 13th. Call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Yeah.
Ms. Felicio.
Yeah.
Foley.
Yeah.
Strohne.
Yeah.
Philbrick is out of town. Ms. Tenny.
Yeah.
Thank you. Looks like we have a quorum. I'd like to remind all passengers, guests, to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak, and this meeting's being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledged receipt of correspondence. The OHS giving us four municipal notices. Subsequently, I put in our meeting packet a email from Ms. Hill on 2/8, Ms. Iavoni on 2/9, and Ms. Iavoni on 2... At this point, I like any public comments. The items not on the agenda for the limited amount of time, and from the public, I'd like to speak.
Excuse me, Ron. It's Gary Russell. I couldn't get my hand up on the meeting thing.
Gary? Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Hi, just briefly, Black History Month, and doesn't get a lot of coverage in Manchester by the Sea, but for planners, I wanted to bring to your attention a really great documentary airing on PBS this month called Jim Crow of the North that explains the history of racial covenants and redlining in housing development. And then also, if you're interested in much broader understanding of racial segregation in planning and housing, a great book to check out is called The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. And it's a really great text that it covers a broader range of racial segregation, but it talks about racial covenants, exclusionary zoning, the history of white flight, et cetera. So, given that we continue to talk about diversifying our housing in Manchester by the Sea, I think these are two great resources for the public and planners to check out. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. First item on the agenda is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Districts 3A. I'd like to start first with an update from Betsy. Could you give us an update?
So, Sue, both Sue Croft and I are looking at various grant programs for assistance with the mapping and the Excel programs. The state has a particular system they want us to use, and I don't really have a lot of experience with this. So, I've contacted CHAPA and Mass Housing Partnership and MAPC. We applied for, the town applied for a grant under the TAP program, potentially for this. And I'm actually meeting on Thursday with Sue Croft to go over potential other options. And it would be pretty much for the technical issues of the GIS shapefiles and the integration with the database.
Ron, can I add a comment to that?
Go ahead.
So, I reviewed the action plan applications for all the communities that have submitted so far, and it looks like the vast majority have gone through the Mass Housing Partnership, because then you can get independent consultants, a lot, Emily Inus, Inus Associates, RKG, Horsley-Witten, Barrett Planning. So, I think that would be a really good spot for Manchester to go through that, to get an unbiased, independent consulting firm.
Laura?
A question for Betsy. What's the turnaround time here on the grants? Or, you know, what assistance is provided and how that fits in with the calendar that you drew?
Some of the turnaround is fairly short, like a couple of months. So, I'm anticipating that it's mid-February now. We should have a decision for somebody to assist in this by May.
Okay, great. And is there a backup plan if, for any reason, the grant doesn't go?
We're applying for a couple of different grants, so I'm pretty optimistic that we'll get something that will assist us.
I have one more question. Are you, are you, are we looking into engineering grants? Doing engineering studies? Some towns are doing that.
I'm not sure that we'd need an engineering study, per se. It's more just database and GIS. And a lot of these planning firms handle GIS.
Okay, because some of these towns have the same issues that we have with wetlands and being close to the wastewater treatment. So, they're getting engineering studies, and I thought that would be helpful.
I could look into that.
Sarah Creighton.
So, the grant is for the, to pay a consultant, then do we have to do an RFP for the consultant? Or can we just take from a state list?
We could take from a state list.
Okay, so that procurement time is...
Because some of those people, like Horsley-Witten, are on the state list, so...
Okay.
That's what we try to do.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Betsy. So, about a month ago, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, Select Board. They recommended the creation of a task force and voted to recommend the composition. The idea is to have diverse competition, composition, to get a range of perspectives to the table. This is a fact-finding group to study the pros and cons of the 48 3A and report back to the planning board. They have no decision-making power, purely advisory. The more information the planning board receives, the better decisions we can make. Summary of the task force makeup and charge was included in your packets. I'd like to move forward with any comments or move forward with voting gay or nay to the task force. Any comments?
I have comments. I think we've already started this conversation at our last meeting. So, the planning board has been elected by the people of Manchester to do this exact job. We are a diverse board. We have lots of backgrounds. And our power is given to us by Mass Jungle Law. So, for us to create a task force when we have not done this in the past, we've just done zoning recodification. I just don't understand why this board would take a suggestion from another board that doesn't have the charge of zoning to do our job for us. So, I am very concerned that members of this board would recommend, you know, not doing the job that we were elected to do.
Any other comments?
So, I have a couple of comments on that. The only body that can approve a new zoning bylaw for the town is the town meeting.
Correct.
And we are certainly unable to provide a recommendation and a report to the town meeting as to what we think is going to happen. And I believe that's the plan here. The task force will report to the planning board. The planning board would then take that into its consideration and then submit its own proposal to the town meeting. I don't think there's any usurpation of our power. I think what we're trying to do is build some consensus as to what kind of zoning changes would be acceptable to the town. And rather than just bringing this to the floor, we'd be much better off with a wide range of perspectives as to how and whether this rezoning can be done.
I agree, and I think that's why we reach out to the boards and ask for recommendations and their input, and we take that consideration. I don't think we need to give advisory boards a voice at the table of elected officials.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm in favor of the task force model. I like the representation of the various board members on it. And particularly appreciate the, having a member with a background in climate change or climate resiliency. I think that is going to be important to this, to this work. And so, I think it's, I think it's a good way to get, you know, kind of a broad cross-section of a number of different boards. And I certainly see us still being integral with the decision, not the decision-making, but the review and the recommendations and having a strong voice in it. And it seems to me like a very balanced way to do it.
Okay, Mary or Sarah?
Yeah, I'll have to agree with what Christine has said. I think this is exactly what people are elected to do, the study. And we did get a good email this morning in our packet, and I've been reading through that. And I, I would like to have the time to read through it more and look at some of these, the case law with this, with like task forces and being able to use town staff and resources in those areas. I don't know if we're in compliance with that. But with this sheet that says the MBTA zoning task force, the first line says the purpose of the task force would be to assess whether the town should proceed with complying with Chapter 48. I would like to see if there is a task force, which again, I'm against, is that they don't decide whether the town should proceed or not. They are strictly data gathering for the planning board. And I don't see really any data points spelled out of what this task force would, would do or accomplish. So, I, I can't see moving forward at this point, not knowing what they're actually tasked with. So, I, you know, there's a lot of things to this, and I don't, I don't see any detail on this.
We did get a, an answer on that email from Town Council. And we take our direction from Town Council. And Town Council's opinion is that no way that the task force will usurp the planning board's power or take away any from its task of recommending zoning amendments. The MBTA zoning task force will bring recommendations to the planning board, and the planning board has the ability to accept those recommendations or not. That's the ruling from Town Council, and that's who we listen to. Any other comments from the board? Sarah?
I also am in favor of the task force model. And I think that the task force can, needs to, as they start their work, they have an opportunity to refine their purpose. And I would caution us about the assessing whether we should proceed or not as the first piece, because we don't know what the compliance is. So, I would just ask that we tend, that at least as we think about this, that we first assess the best way to comply, and then, once we have that, then we can assess it. And so, I would urge the planning board to also be open-minded and think about all the opportun, all the options for compliance. And then, once we know what those are, assess them, as opposed to assessing them in the affirmative or the negative without any specificity. So, I think that the task force as laid out is fine. And, you know, I think the first task for me, from, is to understand the compliance and what, how do we best comply? And I agree that the task force meetings will be open to the public, so we can all attend and participate, I'm sure. And that then we'll take it up here as, as we are required to have public hearings on any zoning changes. So, I'll move to accept the recommend, recommended MBTA task force.
I would like to make another final comment before we get here.
Well, I'm just going to make a comment.
Have a discussion.
Okay, great.
Is that okay? Procedure.
You're the chair.
I'll make a motion to accept the MBA task force as presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
There is. I would like to make a comment. So, during the past year, once this law has been passed, several members of this board have asked for this to be put on the agenda, and it wasn't. And I have been made aware through the town administrator that he filled this role in conjunction with the Select Board, because we hadn't done our job, and he was filling a void. So, I would like to make that abundantly clear that the Select Board and the town administrator felt that we did not do this. I've asked personally...
What does this have to do with the motion on the...
Because I am concerned that...
Did you make the connection between the...
The setup of the board of the task force leads the chair. And I personally have asked for this topic to be put on the agenda several times. And so, if the task force is going to be part of the chair, I have a very big concern, because I don't feel that you were doing your duties, listening to the board members of Concerns over the last year.
Any further comments on the motion?
Just clarification. I believe that the, the composition is two planning board members, one who will chair the committee, not necessarily that the chair of the planning board will be on the task force.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
So, I guess I would like copies of emails and conversations. I mean, this has never been brought to the planning board. This is just being brought to us for us to vote to, I mean, our charge on the website.
We had a meeting with the joint Select Board a month ago and discussed it.
So, it was brought to us, Ron. We never discussed it as a board. This was already...
We're discussing it now.
No, we're not. We're voting on it. It's already been predetermined. It's in a format. I, I would like to request the emails and conversations where this happened. The planning board is in charge of zoning, and there's been conversations, obviously, outside of this board that made this happen.
We had a joint meeting with the board, the Select Board, and we did discuss it. And we also walked line by line through the application, line by line jointly with the Select Board. Each person went around and, and made comments. So, just a clarification that it was, it has been reviewed by this board.
The application was reviewed.
The...
There was a lot of discussion.
A lot of discussion.
I listened to the meeting. I would beg to differ. I think a lot of information was brought to the discussion.
Speaking.
So, again, I think I'm requesting the email conversations between the Select Board and the town administrator and Betsy where this happened, because I do not feel that there has been adequate conversation in this public forum.
I'm in motion to create a task force. Has been any other discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Tenny?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ms. Felicio?
No.
Miss Foley?
No.
Passes four, too. Okay. MAPC Preliminary Traffic Study Report Discussion.
Oh, excuse me. Just one more thing. Should we put on for our next meeting the agenda of how we appoint our members to that task force?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to get on and see if we can mute that.
So, Betsy, can you please detail that you, what's the schedule on MAPC and what we're looking for on the board?
So, MAPC did a presentation at the December meeting, and they asked for comments regarding what they had provided. And we haven't, the board hasn't had a chance to review it. It's a situation where they originally were coming to this meeting to do a final presentation. I didn't feel that was correct, given the fact that they really hadn't had some comment from this board. So, they have been put off until the first meeting in March, and they're asking for some additional comment.
So, as far as process for additional comment, thinking maybe the board will send you their comments?
That would be fine, or if you want to discuss it.
Put it on the agenda to discuss openly, or when, when are they expected back?
They're coming back the first meeting in March.
In March.
So...
So, we would have one more meeting to discuss it.
One more meeting, right.
What's the letter of the board?
Is there a reason why we can't discuss it now?
Is the board prepared to discuss it now?
Did you receive my comments?
I did get your comments.
I think we provided comments when they came the first time.
I believe we agreed that we were going to all send comments to Betsy.
So, I guess there was a document that was put into our folders, maybe a few hours before the meeting. And I guess I'm continually concerned. I mean, the planning board's responsibility is to conduct studies and plans of the resources and the needs of the town. I don't even understand where the downtown improvement came up with this.
Oh, why put that up? Because you asked for it.
I don't know where they came into. I have the scope of the work of the parking study, and the downtown improvement and advisory board seems to have gone rogue and done some studies, come up with a PowerPoint, which we have never been presented with. So, I really do feel like there is a, no what.
It was presented in December, at the December meeting. MAPC provided and went through that.
No, she's talking about different...
No, I'm not. No, you didn't.
She's not talking about a study. It was a survey.
A survey, and the cover page of the survey clearly says, "In conjunction with the MAPC parking study." I am very concerned about what is happening behind the scenes in this town. Our job is to do studies of the needs and the resources of this town. Someone is authorizing independent advisory boards to do this. So, I'm just really concerned continually when this is happening. Was the grant money used to do this? Who authorized this? I'm just continually...
So, the downtown improvement group did their own survey. They, they just went out and surveyed residents and property owners and merchants as to how the parking spaces are being used. That's all they did, wasn't it?
It's our job. They don't have that independent authority to do that.
Super. I went, you expressed this concern at, at one of the last meetings in November, December. I went back through, because you claimed that there wasn't any discussion about it. I went back through all of Sue Brown's memos and a couple of other, there were a couple of other documents on the SharePoint. And almost every month of last year, there was an update of what was going on with traffic studies and parking studies.
Correct, and none involved the Downtown Improvement Committee.
Some of them did.
Absolutely not, and it's not in the scope of this work, of the project that we agreed to and voted at town meeting, and it's on the cover page of this process. In fact, I did some surveys, and so the information that I collected, I thought I was doing for the MAP study. So, there's been a massive miscommunication on this parking study. I interviewed five businesses, so I don't know where this information went to, who collected it. My understanding, it was going towards the actual study that we were given on the 12th of December. But clearly, as a planning board member that agreed or didn't agree to the scope of work, the Downtown Improvement Committee is not involved with this study at all. And apparently, their front page of their report includes our study that we, as a planning board, authorized.
So, how is, how would the board like to get comments? Should we give them to Betsy, or do we want to discuss them now? Or do we want to wait for them to come back in March?
So, are we, are we sticking with the original scope, or is it expanded? I'm vastly confused right now.
We're just comments on their presentation, I believe, is what we're looking for.
No, but I'm also referencing what Christine just said, so that, so are we still, are, are we still working with MAPC on this parking study? Or is it also with downtown improvement?
They're trying to wrap it up. And downtown improvement, as I understand it, has been involved. They were involved in some of the data collection. As I understand it, a number of people were invited to participate in the data collection. And the results that were in the SharePoint were posted in December, and then they were reposted at the SharePoint for this meeting.
The results of...
The results of the parking study. Then, there was an additional study that was VHB. I believe it was VHB.
That was even different. That's for street improvements.
That was for street improvements.
But for part of it...
And that was DPW, I believe.
With the DPW, and part of that was they wanted to see how the parking spaces in town were being used, so they conducted their own survey.
So, not, not having the data in front of me, it does sound like there's been some, some data creep, but scope creep.
No, there, no, there is no, there is no scope creep.
Okay, so the downtown improvement study, we should just ignore?
Well, no, I don't think we should ignore it, but it's not part of the MAPC study at all.
Okay, so they didn't come in under that MAPC grant?
They didn't. It's a separate thing.
All right, so the title you reference is...
I think when they say in conjunction, they just mean it's simultaneous. They were doing it around the same time that the part of the MAPC study was being done.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I have a problem then with using this. Did they use the town planner at the time? Did they use, I mean, this, the person that was on staff doing MAPC work? I mean, I have a lot of questions.
Becky, do you have a comment?
I just want to comment to something, Becky, Chair of the Select Board, Jake. I just wanted to make a clarification, if I may, Chair, to what Ms. Felicia stated about studies. I seem to feel that it implied that the planning board was the only board that could request studies and get studies done. That is not the case, by any stretch of the imagination. So, many boards and committees can request studies, because a lot of the studies do not necessarily fall under the direct purview of the planning board. So, just, I, I don't know if that was your intent, but that's how I perceived it. And I just wanted to make that clarification, that studies do not just fall under the planning board.
I don't think I stated that. My concern is that there was two simultaneous parking studies going on at the same time, which the planning board had no knowledge of this downtown improvement. So, this is a big concern of mine.
My concern is we're getting off topic. We're talking about the MAPC parking study and what our comments are on it, not the scope of the downtown improvement study and whatever they did. Many thanks to them for what, you know, for their efforts. I, I'm not prepared tonight to go back and revisit the MAP study, because I, I looked at it the night that it was presented to us. It was fresh in my mind then. I would need to go back and re-comment. So, I would suggest we put this off and either send comments to Betsy or do it in person. But I don't think it's a productive use of our time to go back and try to analyze what the Downtown Improvement Committee might have done as a separate effort.
Thanks, Sarah.
I'm happy to, I did send some comments to Betsy. If it's helpful, I could just quickly summarize them, and maybe that would help people focus their, their thoughts about the study, if that's helpful, or...
Maybe you want to hold off till we discuss it, maybe next meeting?
Okay, that's fine.
It's been my thought, so...
I'm happy to share them in the folder for next meeting. Is that helpful?
Yeah, and I just, I know the, the high-level one I did when they presented last time was that one of the outcomes that they wanted to do with the study was recommendations for the MBTA zoning, yet they're not studying the full half-mile radius from the downtown train station. So, I suggested either they increase their scope or they take that data point off. That, I don't think they can make recommendations if they're not looking at the whole scope.
That was my big, that was my big complaint, that was my big comment, is I think that they said that they were going to have goals for the MBTA 3A study, and the scope of their work doesn't allow them to. And, and given that we haven't yet decided what we're going to do for our 3A compliance, it would be hard for them to know, you know, to predict the future. So, I think they, I think, I agree with Mary that the, the scope of their work, I, I, that there wasn't a goal that was achievable.
Will the two weeks be enough time for them to get back to us on our comments?
Probably.
And can we just state for the record that MAPC refused to provide the data that they collected? Is that true, Betsy?
They had apparently some raw data, which they didn't feel was, they've processed it. They're transportation engineers.
Okay, I just clarifying, that they refused to provide the data that we paid $20,000,000.
I can ask them again.
Okay. So, the next topic, 30 minutes, was the retreat. So, we had scheduled a retreat last month. Cancelled it for a couple of reasons. But in any case, I'd like to reschedule a retreat. I'd like to have complete board attendance at it. And I'd like... And I'd like to ask the board items that they feel important to accomplish at the retreat and what the expectations are. We set an agenda. I met with Sylvia Biedersdorf and Sue Beckman. Sylvia has expertise in governance and town government. She interviewed most of us about how to, I guess a couple of years ago, about how to make the board better. So I thought she'd be a good facilitator. But I'm opening ups to the board on, you know, what we want to do at the retreat and what our expectations should be. Any comments? Sarah?
So I attended, I was going to bring up the end of the meeting, but I attended a workshop. It was the Running Municipal Meetings Workshop, I think everybody heard about. And there were two suggestions there from Stowe and Deerfield about... There was a code of conduct that one of the towns had, which I thought would be interesting to discuss at a retreat, as well as guidelines for public input. And I thought that would also be a good model to discuss, because we have this zoning and the task force coming up. And I'm sure there will be a lot of people who want to have public input. So how do we make that productive? And, and I know we've talked about procedures. But the two, I mean, we, I can share from that meeting. I can actually share the link to that Running Municipal Meetings webinar. I think I got it. Yeah, as a follow-up. But it was interesting. And I thought those two documents would be good agenda items for a retreat.
Any other comments?
So I think that can be part of a bigger discussion about just basic operations on the Planning Board. How we conduct meetings and how, I guess, regulations and how we sort those out. And Betsy had done a pretty good job, I thought, of breaking them up into different topics that we could talk about. And just sort of generally how we conduct our business.
We started to talk last time about the possibility of having alternates, particularly for site plan review or when some of these longer duration projects come up. So I'd be interested in talking about the possibility of alternates. And, and if site plan review, if we get, you know, the general, I guess it's Section 12 passed, thinking about how to make the most robust process around site plan review and special perimeter review that we can.
Mary, you have a statement? No comments? Hey, I think those are all good, good ideas. I think we can kind of get them into the agenda somehow. I think we would like to have, hold this retreat after the election of April election or May election. And then we'll have a retreat then. I think we have a lot on our plate to get done between now and town then. That would be my idea. What's on that? Just scheduling it earlier? Okay, thanks. So since the public hearing isn't scheduled to...
A few minutes?
Seven. I'd like to move, yeah, some things around. Just a reminder to the board that you need to take your conflict of interest training. Deadline is March 16th. So it's an online course. I think it runs about an hour. And then after you take it, you need to open another module that says you've taken it. And so make sure you get those two pieces done. The next item I have to talk about is regular meeting minutes. We have November 9th, November 28th, and December 12th. Any comments on the minutes?
Yes. I have just a handful of typos.
Okay. Gail was with us?
I only had two meeting minutes in my, November 9th and November 28th.
Same, I only had two.
Which one was missing?
I just had November 9th and November 28th.
Gail, any idea on 12/12?
It was not posted in a timely manner. I will post it for the next meeting.
Thank you. On 11/9 and 11/28? Start with 11/9?
Do you want me to just say them now?
Can we just approve them subject to fixing the typos?
I have a typo on November 28th. Maybe it's the same as Mary has.
What is it?
Would you like me to go? I have only have one. November 28th. And then the typo has a, the word has a meaning change. So there's twice that I saw that the word slopped with two Ps was typed in place of sloped. So I just wanted to correct that, since it has a meaning change.
So if you want to forward your comments to, to Gail? If, if they're typos?
If they're typos, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And I'm gonna pass along here. And on November 9th, I was not present, so.
So with that in mind, could I have a motion to approve based on...
A move that we approve the minutes of November 9th, subject to typo, typo fixing that Mary's going to provide.
Is there a second?
Second. I have, I do have a question. I did not participate in the special permit. So my vote will be subject to my abstaining from that portion of the minutes. I don't know how I, how do I approve my minute, the minutes if I wasn't in part, if I wasn't there for part of the...
Hopefully, they'll say you were there for the meeting, but you recuse yourself from that discussion.
From that. I don't think we need your vote to pass them, right?
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Abstained, because I wasn't there.
To abstain.
Oh, to abstain.
For number nine, for November 9th?
November 9th.
Yeah, I simply wasn't there. That's why I abstained.
So now I'll move that the minutes of December, no, November 28th be approved with the same typo fixing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have 20 minutes. I was wondering if cell signaling can start, maybe? Their presentation. I think they're out in the hall. Otherwise, we can... It's back in 20 minutes. I think that we may move a lot faster than I thought we would.
Well, we could talk about, in the category of things that were not on the agenda, we could summarize our discussion at the...
On the recodification? Never mind. We thought you might want to start now, but...
Well, we, we could. Or we do.
But then I'd have to stop for the...
But we have a public hearing at 7:00. So you'd get 20 minutes.
You'd have to stop.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, we can discuss another subject, actually.
All right. We'll be out here.
Sorry. All right, on recodification.
So Chris, Mary, Chris, and I met on Thursday to talk predominantly about the proposed amendments or, you know, suggestions to the senior housing proposed bylaw to take up at the public hearing. And I think we had, we had some healthy disagreement. And we had some, some proposed changes around strengthening the... Why don't you summarize some historic?
So actually, Mary had a good suggestion, which we've included in the language. And Betsy had added some language about the use of existing buildings and non-conformities and also taking into account the historic nature of some buildings and how, if that's the case, a historic building is being converted for senior housing, that historic guidelines essentially be followed in the conversion. So basically, we made it a little bit bigger, but didn't really change the intent too much. Language is posted on the SharePoint?
I will after this meeting.
Oh, it is, it's there.
Yeah, oh, okay.
It's there.
I meant to put it...
When you say it's posted, is it posted?
For tonight's SharePoint.
Oh, it's in tonight's?
Yeah.
Is that posted?
By Friday. Well, no, is there a new one? It was like version change.
Okay. So I guess for the record, this conversation be not one that's reasonably anticipated. Seeing that we have a public hearing on the 27th, I think this is out of order and this should be reasonably anticipated. I don't understand why we just wouldn't put this on the agenda. I don't think it's a valid conversation to have without being on the agenda.
We're just being briefed. We're not voting on anything. I'm curious as to what went on at the meeting. I, I don't see that as an issue to be briefed. Does the board feel that, you know, we want to stop talking about it or listening?
No, I, I just had some input.
Excuse me?
I just had some input.
Well, can I just preface that? Because I suspect what you're going to say. So we had, I think Mary had raised six issues. And we had asked her to, I think there were like six roughly, that, that she had concerns. And then she was, so she was sort of wrestling with some of your concerns. And so we suggested that she come back with specific suggestions, which may be what you're about to suggest.
No. Well, maybe, maybe partly. First, I have some process questions and concerns. And then I'll, I'll talk about the bylaw. I believe we're still slated to have a public hearing on the February 27th. So I don't know when the Planning Board is going to be able to review the revisions and post it for the public to review in a timely fashion. So there's that concern. I did propose many different things that were not included in the revised that's posted to SharePoint, even though we did agree upon some of them. So I'm concerned about that. Unilaterally decided after the meeting that things would be included and things wouldn't. I did recommend at a high level, we split out the senior housing bylaw into senior housing and senior housing facilities, which are two vastly different animals. That did not fly at that meeting, but maybe it would fly at another one. I think there are two very different requirements, two very different sets of data needed to address those for zoning. So, yes, so I, I do have the other points that I would bring up as a motion. I don't know if you want me to do that at the public hearing. But again, I don't know what's going to be posted for residents to view, since we didn't vote on anything that meeting. Thus, technically, we're back at what we voted on six months ago.
We'll need to post the proposed changes in the hearing notice.
Then those are in the process of being posted.
So what changes did we agree upon?
We didn't agree upon any changes.
They're drafts.
But who discussed them?
They were discussed at various meetings that have been held. And the senior housing was discussed last Thursday.
But we have to vote on the changes. We got, like, the three of us don't have the power to just go ahead and change it.
So let's hold, can I make a suggestion? Let's have another working session that's this week? Or, you know, where we, or hold another meeting on Tuesday, just for the purposes of discussing and voting the, the specific proposals that Mary wants to run forward? I agree that, you know, we, when we left the meeting, we suggested that she... I thought it would be, I thought it was going to be on this meeting agenda. I didn't pay attention. So I didn't pay attention. Yeah.
Asking for it.
I know. It's my fault. So, sorry.
Do we...
So I think we're fine for the public hearing. The intent is the same. The, the public hearing notice covers the, and we can, you know...
Do you want to vote on these changes? I think, how drastic are the changes?
I'm happy to talk about them now. Mary wants to. Do you have specific proposals?
I don't think we can vote on something that's not on the agenda.
That's probably, probably true.
I can't vote. I don't know.
So let's have a working session on...
So if you want to post another session, you just need to work around the note from that there's a holiday coming up. So we have to put that into the equation.
How about next Tuesday?
So you need to post ahead of that holiday.
Yep. We'll have a working session on them with the intention of finalizing the senior housing.
So I think this last working session, I tried to call in. I was out of town last week and I was unable to participate because the link did not work. So I will be there in person. But I think the post was only for senior housing. So are we going to discuss the four completely or senior housing? What will be...
I think the only one we had talked about making substantive changes to was the senior housing.
Maybe we should put them all on?
But we can put them all on.
Yeah, because there was changes to the...
Adult Entertainment.
Administration and Procedures.
We agreed to stick with the adult entertainment that we, that was proposed for the downtown.
But let's put them all on.
Bring them all on, yeah.
So we would need a quorum for this working session for voting purposes?
We don't have to vote.
That's right.
Is it a working session if we vote? I think it's got to be a meeting.
I think it should be a voting session. I think we should push these forward.
All right. Let's plan on Tuesday. Can people make Tuesday? How many people can make Tuesday? Looks like we can have a quorum.
So that would be the 21st? Is that the date?
21st. The fact is not on the agenda. It's my mistake. You have a hand up.
As a point of information, the Select Board will be meeting on the 21st. So there may be a conflict in rooms or something.
I mean, the people have complained about this. Can we just move to the 22nd? I really don't like conflicting with Board of Sogman. I don't think it's right.
Please say it's okay with me.
What a resource task force meeting, but I think it's this week.
It's this week.
It's this week?
22nd's fine.
Oh, 22nd's okay with me. That works for me.
It's better than 21st, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do, meet on the 22nd?
That's the Wednesday?
Yes.
Hopefully, there's no other meetings that day.
Or we'll work around that.
Any other income or...
No, income's Thursday.
And the CBA? They mean on Wednesdays?
We don't have a meeting here.
Sorry, Alan, nothing on the Manchester calendar on the 22nd?
It was the email from Brian about the meeting.
Okay, yes. So the...
And that came in on...
We got an email from Brian Pike looking for somebody from the board to sit on the Harbor Master Plan Committee. He called it something else.
Management, I think. He doesn't like the word master.
I know, yeah. So want to think about putting someone on that board. I think we should wait until Susan is back with us. She's a boater. I don't know if she has any interest. She's a boater. I don't know if she has any interest.
I was going to suggest that we at least take it up at the same time. We take up the 3A task force, so we kind of spread the, think about who's going to be on the various, maybe look at our liaisons at the same time.
Okay. Anything else on recodification that?
So just to clarify, the, as I understand it, the senior housing proposal is a new proposal. So that's not part of the recodification. That is a new proposal.
Well, we've been.
Those adult entertainment.
Yeah, we included those as sort of a, as one in the same.
Well, they're not.
We called it one in the same, whether we should have or not.
A recodification is technically taking existing language to make it clearer, but not change the intent. So you're, it's kind of mixing apples and oranges here. Because if you're recodifying it, you're taking the existing bylaw and just making it clearer. But if you're adding new stuff, that's not.
So I guess we should call it zoning changes.
Zoning amendment, yeah, or zoning change. So just to clarify, because people might get confused with that.
Thank you, Beth. I've been trying to clarify that for years. I guess these were presented in the fall, so I think we just need to make sure that people understand that, too.
Well, we didn't actually present them. They were to be presented.
Well, I mean, they were on the warrant.
They were on the warrant. That's right.
So are we still planning to have this March 1st special meeting, the select board on finalizing the warrant?
I think at least some, some member of the board needs to go to the select board meeting and tell them our recommendation.
Okay, so wouldn't.
So I'm hoping that after the, the way I look at it is we have four changes that are relatively, this is my opinion, relatively contained. And then if we have our public hearing, get input, make any changes, and finalize our vote that night, it seems to me to be a reasonable scope of work, given that we've talked about these things and we'll have a working session to review them. We may hear some good feedback that we want to incorporate. And then we can vote that night to move it forward to the warrant, I hope. And then one of us can go to the select board meeting and all of us, or whomever, however we want to do it.
And then some kind of public engagement besides the public hearing of what we're doing, maybe something in the cricket to explain what we're doing.
Yeah, I think we'll just do something in the cricket to publicize the public hearing next week.
And beyond that, too, what these changes mean. I think there was some, last meeting, there was some issues with getting the word out. But we need to get something.
It is an annual town meeting, so attendance is. People understand that there's a meeting.
No, but what we're proposing.
So has this public hearing been submitted to the cricket?
No, we did that last time.
So what's the?
Your public hearing has been posted to the cricket for the meeting on February 27th.
Okay, great. Thanks.
It needed to run for two weeks. So what is in the cricket is what's at the public hearing. If you wish to change it, then we need to cancel the 27th and go to another meeting day.
No, no, no. I just misunderstood Sarah saying that we were in the process of submitting it. So that made me a little concerned. All good.
I don't think we've discussed the kind of format of the public hearing. I think last time we had kind of that more of a workshop with people mingling around. Is it going to, I think it's important to have perhaps some more structure so residents can ask a question, all residents can hear, and then all residents can hear the answer. Are we going to discuss the format?
We can put it on the agenda for next time. But I, the public hearing that we had last time was not the same as what was at the cafeteria. We actually, on May 20 something, we had a public hearing. It was by Zoom only. And we presented the, and there's actually a recording of it on the website still. So there is a, well, yes, you're right. It should be a follow-up meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Mary. We should be thinking about it.
I will pull together the slides for that. We can talk about that next time.
Yeah, we can talk about it at the working session, actually.
So I guess at the last meeting, we had talked about inviting the public to our meetings going forward, but this agenda still said public on Zoom. So is there a reason why we're not inviting the public?
I think that's came from the select board.
Should that just be taken on?
Public.
Well, the legal notice states it's a public hearing.
You think about our regular meetings or the public?
Anything, anything meeting going forward.
I think there was just the applicants were supposed to, can you clarify that?
It's up to the chair of each board committee to determine that. Up until April, it was an April date. I think it's late April, at which point I think we go back to non.
So I still think having it on Zoom is valuable? And just to have it, just the public just come in here?
They'll stay on Zoom. It's whether public may attend or not. That's the.
I have no problem with the public coming in.
That's my only thing. Yes, we're going to still continue to do Zoom, but I think we should not, public on Zoom. Many people think that they're not invited to join us in this room.
Let's make it clear the public's invited as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Okay, I have 6:59. Two more seconds. Okay, 7 o'clock. I'd like to open the continued public hearing on the special permit application for a site plan approval for Manchester Parks and Rec. This is to construct a youth athletic field with 25 parking spaces on the site of the old burn dump at 156 to 160 Pine Street. Roll call to open the public hearing. Ms. Tenny?
Here.
Mr. Only?
Here.
Ms. Felicio?
Here.
Lovely.
Here.
Okay, at this time, is the applicant have any comments? Cheryl or Chuck, any additional updates?
Thank you. No, I think we've sent everything along. I'm going to turn it over to Chuck and Brandon Cogle from Weston and Hampton, but I believe we've sent everything along already.
Yeah, I don't have anything that. I think, you know, we have received bids on this project. So we have a mo' bidder when the pricing thing be in order. And we're happy with their references. So I think we're willing to go the next step. And we're looking for the final approval from the board.
Any issues with the board? This requires a vote, a unanimous vote of all five of us. So any continuing issues, or are we ready to move this, vote this?
Can I just make a comment? So there was a draft decision that was issued at the December meeting. And it requires five votes, so everybody here. If all five approve, that's great. If they're missing a vote, then it gets denied, and they cannot resubmit for two years unless there are material and substantive changes to the application. The applicant also has the ability to withdraw without prejudice. And another member of the board, so then there would be, the new planning board member would, we then hold a public hearing. The new member would be able to vote. So that would give a little more wiggle room should there be one voter who decides to not approve the project.
Maybe I'd like to take a straw poll of the board before we move forward.
Can I ask questions before or?
Yes, go ahead. Mary?
And I think this is probably to Chuck. That at least in this preliminary decision that Betsy just referenced, one of the items that I guess the planning board put in was that number eight, parking may be allowed on Pine Street towards the northern end of the site, towards Route 128. Our general bylaws, parking is allowed on both sides of Pine Street. So I don't know if we ever as a board discussed parking on both sides there with sightlines in the crosswalk. Could you take us through that a little bit? And what the signage would be and how parking would be managed?
I guess, so I'm not 100% sure. You know, if the bylaw suggests that there's parking on both sides of the street, we wouldn't really prevent that. I mean, the thing could be done for a school street. We're happy to include additional signage, you know, to, you know, help people understand that, you know, there may be parking during, you know, field use times or, you know, during the different conference, similar to like what you do in a school zone where it's, you know, parking, or, you know, when the lights start flashing, you know, the speed is reduced because schools are session, things like that. So, you know, we could, we could take a look at that. We could also discuss that with our consultants. So we have Weston and Simpson on the line tonight. But we could also, you know, talk to, talk to other vendors about products that might be available. I'm not sure if that helps or not. I mean, there, there is, I'm not sure, Betsy, you can correct me, but I think we put in there, in the draft decision, that there were follow-ups that would be required for the, for the safety zone that, with the police. So, you know, that's something that we'll look at. And if there's additional information available at that time, then we could add to the signage.
Yeah, I mean, my obvious concern is these are little kids. And, I mean, like, I have a big car. And if a little kid, if I parked and a little kid was trying to get from, you know, at the sidewalk and looking around to see if they could go or looking at the flashing light, I just don't know if we've mapped out those sightlines yet with the, with the parking. At least I didn't.
Certainly, we'd have a restriction for the, you know, based on the MUCCD guidelines, you're not supposed to have parking within, I believe it's 20, but it might be 25 feet of a crosswalk. So if we had the proper setback, I think that, that is specifically for addressing sightline issues. But I don't, so I don't foresee us having a problem. We'd also have the rapid flashing beacon that we've discussed at previous times. So, you know, I think that we have the, have the means to address these issues.
So if I could just add something in response to the concern about public safety, there were a couple of conditions that were added from the original draft. And those items include number five. The applicants shall work with the Manchester Police Department and applicable town officials to conduct a traffic study with the goal of decreasing the speed limit on Pine Street in the area of the proposed field from 25 to 20 miles per hour. In the event that the reduction of speed is not allowed, all signage and other measures shall be taken into account in the, a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Number six, sight distances shall be maintained to a minimum of 250 feet from the driveway entry exit for travel speed of 25 miles per hour on Pine Street. In the event the speed limit is reduced to 20, sight distance may be adjusted per Institute of Traffical Engineers to 200 feet or as specified. As may be needed, brush trimming may be required along Pine Street. Number seven, advanced signage for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon shall be provided in accordance with the manufacturer's standards and as approved by the Manchester Police Chief. Number eight, parking may be allowed on Pine Street toward the northern end of the site, towards 128, shall be subject to the review and approval of the Manchester Police Chief. In all instances, with the parking of vehicles on Pine Street, sight distances shall be provided that meet the standards of the posted speed limit. Those four conditions were all added as a public safety measure.
Yeah, Ron, if I may, thank you. Becky Jakes, Select Board Chair. Most of those items that are being discussed right now actually come under the purview of the Select Board. So rather than you all having to spend time on items that come under our purview, I think I'd just say some deliberation on this.
So my, so can we put in the decision that the Select Board is responsible for those four items or whatever it is? And then we pass it over to you.
I don't think you can make, if I may, Ron, through you. I don't think the planning board can tell the Select Board what they have to do in their purview. You can make a recommendation. But it's for what comes under our purview, that's our decision as a collective board to make.
Yeah, no, I just meant that it would be recommendations from the.
Yeah, I think it is a recommendation.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments?
So I guess I have a question about, when they reference pedestrians, can you confirm or expand upon if pedestrian include a child on a bicycle?
Was that question from, I'm not sure what the question was.
Yeah, that was a question. It was for you. So the traffic engineer document keeps references of pedestrian and the sightlines for a pedestrian. Is that the same as a child or someone on a bicycle?
So the sightline in question is when they're exiting the park at the, at the crosswalk or crossing of Pine Street. So do you mean like if there's a child riding a bike?
So that there's like this stop times based on 25 miles to this. The sightlines need to be this. This person's going to stop based on a pedestrian. I mean, the language is pedestrian. I just want to confirm that that also includes someone on a bicycle.
Well, I think in this sense, the pedestrian would be somebody that's on their bike or anybody utilizing the cropping. So whether they're on a bike or pushing their bike or crossing the road, that, you know, the sightline is the approaching traffic that, and their distance away from seeing that person or that pedestrian or that bike was in the, in the cropping.
Like, I just wanted to make sure, like, the average speed of someone walking is a little different than someone riding a bike. I just wanted to make sure that we were just crossing all our Ts on that.
Rebecca?
This is again something under the purview of the Select Board. Thank you, Chair.
I'm not sure that the sightlines of this is.
Okay, so Laura.
Thank you.
Chuck into the Weston and Simpson team. Last time we spoke about the plans, there was a question that I had raised about returning the fence across the parking to prevent balls from rolling on our cars and things just getting kicked or rolled in that direction. I was wondering how that got resolved or what, what the current thinking was there.
On that one, Brandon?
Yeah, sure. Currently, the plan does not call for a fence to be put in between the field and the parking lot. It can always be added if desired. The group of people and the age group of people playing on this field, we typically would not see, you know, the intensity of play that would typically, you know, consistently, I guess, kick balls towards a parking lot. And I guess I'll, you know, I'll leave it at that.
And what's the setback of the, uh, field to the parking?
Um, I'm gonna actually ask at this point in time my colleague Melissa, if, if she's able to, uh, to share a plan. To be honest, I don't have the exact dimension off the top of my head.
It says host disabled, which means screen sharing, so I can, if I can't, sure, I can measure it for you and let you know, Brandon.
Yeah, I guess.
She should be able to share now.
No, I'm trying. Oh, I still can't. Let me measure it and I'll get back to you.
Just make a point while we're waiting to, um, can I just make a point on this?
Yeah, while we're waiting.
Just probably to Betsy that, um, on page three it says public hearing and it says, um, in attendance and it lists Sarah Quentin, but she's not, she's refused herself.
So the measurements are, it's a range from the edge of the field to the parking lot. It's like a minimum of like 16 feet to a maximum of like 70 feet from where the field lines would be to the parking lot.
70 feet?
70 would be an issue.
And, um, is there a recommended runoff from the edge of the field for play of this age?
Typically it's 10 feet.
10 feet runoff, yeah. Okay. I mean, I defer to the experts here in, um, the layout of, uh, you know, the requirements of the field and the runoff of the field and the safe distance to the cars. I know there's, um, logistical constraints about where you can put foundations for the fencing. It might be considered as an add alternate for the, uh, play just in case it does become necessary. It might, um, it might be useful to at least, um, provide for the possibility of the fence line being installed. Maybe the footing gets installed or, or just provisions for the fence, um, in an add alternate in case, uh, there is a concern that, um, that arises about, um, you know, sort of play creeping off of the fields and balls migrating towards a car in the parking lot. That was my only question. Thank you.
Sure, I, I'll just say we're, I'll, I'll be working with Nate when he gets back. We'll be working with the contractor, Weston Sampson, on the middles and layout. Uh, so, you know, there'll be a standard process there and we can, uh, consider, uh, adding those if we feel necessary once we, you know, see things laid out.
Yeah, after you see the layout in the field perhaps, you can evaluate it. Okay, thanks Chuck.
So do you want that as an additional condition?
It would be a recommendation to evaluate, to evaluate upon, um, layout in the field to evaluate the need for a fence separating the, um, area of play from the parking lot.
Any other comments from the board? So I'd like to take a straw poll because this would set them two years behind. We don't vote this through and they could maybe use other means. So, um, Laura, straw poll, approval?
I'm supportive of it. It's a, a need identified in the master plan. It's a, it's an appropriate location. And, um, so I, I think they've done their homework on it and I support the plan.
Chris O'Me, comment on the straw poll. Christine Delisio, comments?
I am in favor. I just wanted to, I was trying to see in this decision which flashing beacon they were going with. And then I just wanted to find the, um, maintenance because obviously the one at the corner of my street does not work. So I'd like to make sure that the beacon is being maintained.
Yeah, we, we won't know until the contractor submits the actual, uh, device that they intend to install. But I'm confident that we will, uh, be able to utilize whatever they, uh, get approved during the shop during the process.
Ms. Foley, your, uh, comments of approval or no, or straw poll?
Yes.
Okay, um, with that in mind, I'd like to take a, uh, motion to approve the special permit. Is it seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it with the conditions, with the decision as revised this evening.
Any additional comments?
Are we taking any public comment?
We could, but I think we did already. And this has been sitting around since November. Go ahead.
I think the fence are, uh, question was a very valid one and I don't know how you police what age group using these fields. So to say it's a certain age group that's going to be using it, therefore we only don't need this fence or we can step back. I think is, is naive that older time you might have younger kids if that was just a concern, right? So I would, I would absolutely insist on some sort of separation between traffic activities regardless of what age group is supposed to be using it.
Could we have your name and address for the record?
Jonathan Keith, Eighth Victoria Road, Manchester.
So I, I would just add a comment to that because I, it does say that, um, in the summer it's open to all for use. So I guess we, we wouldn't know what age groups are using it. I guess that's a valid point to consider.
Rebecca Jakes.
I'm Rebecca Jakes, 22 Forster Road. In all the various meetings, I thought that it was said that these were not full-size fields. So doesn't that kind of limit the, the use and?
Maybe Cheryl, Cheryl, can you give us some insight on the use?
Yes, it is a, a small sided field, so it's about half the size of a full field. So it is, you know, being built for the smaller children, but during off times will bigger kids be on it? We're not going to be there, um, to tell them not to. So yes, it will be open to the public also. So if adding that fence, um, that at least goes, you know, wraps around the corner, I'm sure we can put that in as an add-on. So at least if it goes from the corner to, you know, um, say 15 feet from the parking lot, that area, I'm sure we can look at that.
Good, thank you. Now that, Sarah Pierce, you have your hand up.
Hi, yes, Sarah Pierce, 9 Front Street, Manchester. I just wanted to ask, um, I frequently walk the Pleasant Pine Street Loop and notice that the traffic that goes from 128 to the Village on Pine Street sometimes doubles the actual speed limit that is posted. Are you taking any sort of extra precautions, um, to monitor the speed limits that are going to be happening through there because several times, you know, people are going so fast, it's, you feel like you're on 128. So, and I also just wondered, like, considering this is a, a playing field, is it considered a satellite school space? Or is it a town field? But is it like school speed limits? Or I know you mentioned 20 miles an hour.
So again, that'll be the purview of the Select Board.
Okay, so that'll be in a separate meeting? That'll be posted?
Uh, Rebecca, I'll let Rebecca answer that.
If I may to the Chair, thank you. Becky Jakes, Select Board Chair. Yes, Sarah, this actually has been discussed, um, several times. Um, and I agree with you in terms of the speed on a number of our roads. But yes, this is being addressed. In terms of, um, the field, that would have to go to Cheryl Marshall. But the speed and handling of that has been discussed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, may, may I comment? Yes, your name and, your name and, uh, address.
I'm John Gathway. I live on 155 Pine Street diagonally across from the field. I'm sure there's been a lot of discussion of the speeding and I get a lot of stories and 50 miles an hour is common. I mean, I jog every morning and I live there and I try to pull out of my driveway and it's bad and it's not well enforced. So if you're counting on enforcement, think again. But I came tonight because I happened to notice in 7.5 of the zoning bylaws, I believe, talks about wildlife habitat. I know my wife has brought this up in previous meetings, but, um, it is a serious wildlife habitat. And in fact, there's a deer run that goes through my yard and across there. And the deer frequently go there to get water. And not too long ago, we had another deer strike right in front of my house, speeding car, young woman on her phone. It's not the first deer strike, so, um, and, you know, I walked through that land many times. There's all kinds of other critters living there, butterflies and a lot of wildflowers and things like that. So I was wondering if you took into consideration at all the, as a wildlife habitat, the deer.
No, it wasn't brought up.
Well, it had been brought up quite a while in the past.
We did a parking study, noticed an accident and one involved a deer, but that was the only one that came up through the parking engineering report.
No, this was a very recent one. In fact, it was the second time when I told the officers, asked the officers if they could put one of the, um,
Deer signs?
Electronic radar speed signs further up where people come off of 128. And, uh, they said, just write it up. They didn't. I've been down the station, the dispatcher said, didn't look at it and it, it never happened. They put one, they put a radar sign further down almost before you get to the flash and red light, but did absolutely no good whatsoever.
So on speeding, that's up to the Select Board, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're not, it's not in our purview, so I'm gonna try to, you know, I'm trying to move on here. I got a presentation, but I understood.
May I, Ron?
May I ask?
Laura?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to respond briefly to the wildlife habitat comment because Nate and I from, and, and others were part of the discussion. But, uh, we did talk about, uh, we changed the planting plan from what was originally shown, um, to, you know, a sort of screen of our, our variety to a mix of native, um, native deciduous and coniferous trees. We talked about saving the wooded edge. Um, obviously sightlines are, are required. Sightlines will be there, but, um, preserving the wooded edge at the edge of Pine Street. And then everything that's outside of the work zone will not be touched. So, um, partly because of the, you know, requirements of the, um, landfill that's underneath it and, um, in an effort to preserve the rest of the vegetation that's on the site. So appreciate the comment, but we didn't work on, you know, the selection of the planting palette.
Well, we need to attempt to address it, so that's a partial answer, but I don't think the deer are going to be happy crossing through the parking lot in the open field. There's no forest, there's no shelter.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mary?
Cheryl, did, was there any wildlife study done on this site? I don't recall seeing it.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Sandy, you have your hand up?
Yep, Sandy Robb, 82 Old Essex Road. It's, it's interesting because I also had a comment on the wildlife. I don't know if it was brought up regarding lighting on the field. I've actually gone there to, um, do some bird watching and, and stuff like that. So it's more than just deer. There's lots of different kinds of wildlife there. Has there been an effort in the design to mitigate lighting, um, both for wildlife purposes and for the neighborhood regarding how the field will, um, be lit? A bit concerned sometimes is, you know, I don't know where our.
It's not going to be lit.
What?
I don't believe it's going to be lit.
It's not going to be lit? Okay, good. So that means we're limiting the amount of use, um, you know, when the time changes happen, um, when things get dark. The other question I had was, is there going to be posted the type of activity that can happen there? I know earlier there was interest in a, in a, um, you know, sort of a, a biking park and things like that. I don't know how deep, uh, the field can get wrecked in, in bad weather where you're exposing anything from below. Are you covering it with, with something so in case there are some activities that happen that aren't planned, that we're protecting everybody? That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Brandon, I'll let you have that one.
Sure, uh, so there, I guess, I'm not sure what you mean by protecting everyone. I'm not sure if that's related to the, the landfill below. And if that's the case, the answer is, uh, yes, uh, there's a, there's a demarcation barrier in place now. Uh, we actually don't intend to, uh, impact the demarcation barrier other than, you know, we're doing work above it. And so the demarcation barrier is intended to stay intact. We have protocols in place. Should it be damaged, obviously it would have to be repaired or replaced. Should it be, should it come in contact, but the intent is to provide minimally 12 inches of all clean material above the, uh, demarcation barrier, uh, if that's what your question is referring to from a, a safety perspective of users.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I trust that when you're developing the field, you're being very careful. I was just thinking about like people going in there and using their bikes and digging big, like a, a big hole in there. And then, you know, that somehow it's, it's marked that that can't sort of happen. That's all. Just some, some thoughts to think about and I'm glad that the field is not going to be lit. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for John.
Okay, yeah, this, go ahead.
Did you express your concern on Zoom or, I mean, I know on Zoom you don't see faces. I just don't recognize the comment. And I didn't know if you wrote in. I just wanted to make sure.
I've been following this since, I don't know, it's been a couple of years when they were debating where the park was going to go and all that kind of thing.
I mean, I think this is our, I just want to make sure that we received your comment. Did you, did you write into the board?
The planning board being involved in the meetings, uh, in, in the past, most of them were either selectman meetings or special, um, meetings. I, I don't recall, I can, could get back to you. I'll ask my wife. She keeps.
No, I said, I, I don't remember your comment and I, I usually remember people's faces and you may have been on screen on the Zoom.
So I, I missed those meetings.
I just want to make sure that we didn't miss your comment.
Okay, with the comments, I'd like to take this time to close the public hearing and vote, um, motion to close the public hearing.
It's a move.
Discussion.
So you need a second?
Second.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, Mary?
To close it? Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Okay, at this time I'd like to take a motion to, um.
I have a motion on the table.
Yes, I think I made it. Chris seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's been seconded?
Yep.
Roll call vote, uh, Mary?
Uh, come back to me, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Mary?
Wildlife one, is it, this is a new issue that we haven't discussed. It's kind of, kind of giving me whiplash here a little bit. I don't know that we fully better that, um, or at all. I'm going to vote yes.
The Chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Permit's granted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have the folks from Cell Signaling Technologies come in. And, yeah, could you have them come in? They are going to give us a preliminary proposal on what they plan to do up at the limited commercial district. They've brought in some of their experts. And we, they have material for us to look at.
Hello.
Hello. So I've introduced you as Cell Signaling Technologies to give the board a preliminary presentation on your plans up at the limited commercial district. Could you introduce your team and give us a little preamble? Mark?
I will do that. Is this table available to you?
Yes.
Go ahead. But I can help you. Can you use your table too? So before we get started, I just want to thank the planning board, the board of selectmen and Greg Fendishfield, but particularly Sarah Creighton and Gary Gilbert. Because if we hadn't had the cooperation of the town last year, we would not have been here tonight because the zoning changes that were enacted opened the door that gave us an opportunity that we wouldn't otherwise have been able to take. So thank you for the time you spent with us. There you go. I also want to acknowledge Michael Colm who's here, who probably isn't going to have a speaking role. But Cell Signaling looked at numerous sites on the North Shore in its effort to find a location for new campus and spent a couple of years doing that. And ultimately, it was Michael who decided that notwithstanding the Atwater Avenue site being compromised, that because of his interest in the environment and his being a Manchester resident, he was willing to make certain sacrifices in order to try to make Atwater Avenue work. And so that's, that's another reason why we're here tonight. And we look at a number of other properties that would have been much more destructive. This was a good comparison. But it's also a short commute for him. Last summer, last July, Cell Signaling through its affiliates acquired the property of Atwater Avenue, which consists essentially of two parcels. One is a forty acre parcel that was the former quarry site. And the other is, you have nine acres that is used in conjunction with the Manchester Athletic Club. And another, another decision that Michael made for the benefit of the town, but also for the benefit of Cell Signaling, was to restore the MAC. The MAC needed an injection and it was not going to be a profit-making operation for Cell Signaling. But Cell Signaling decided that it was the right thing to do, notwithstanding the fact that it could have been a fairly significant component of the campus development. So for the foreseeable future, there will be an athletic club on the forty-nine acres. The other thing that happened after the acquisition was a national competition to choose an architectural firm for this project. It was very competitive. And ultimately, Hamel Green Abrahamson, HGA, was selected for all the right reasons. And Samir Sarucci is the architect from HGA, who's been working on the development of the plans. And he will take you through a PowerPoint presentation momentarily. In addition to Samir, he elected to ask Michael Van Valkenburg Associates, MVVA, represented by Chris Matthews, to be the landscape architectural firm to work with HGA in designing the Cell Signaling campus. Tonight, we're here on an informal basis with the product of their hard work. We promised you when we were working on the zoning change that prior to filing, we would come in and make an informal presentation. We've also been making, keeping regular contact with townspeople. We have a representative from the board of selectmen that we've been talking to on a regular basis. Chuck Dam is now joined us in an effort to make sure that we identify potential problems and address them early in the development of the, prospective development of the site. We would anticipate probably within the next few months filing a special permit application for site plan approval. Thanks to the hard work of Chris and Samir, there are very little exceptions from the dimensional requirements that will be necessitated by the plans that have been put together, as you, as you will see. And even though the zoning changes that you enacted provided for reduction of side yard setback and other things by special permit in order to have a better site design, we're not going to need to take advantage of those opportunities, except with respect to one small amount of surface parking, which Samir will explain to you. So before Samir and Chris get started, I'd like Craig Thompson, who's here with us, who's the Senior Vice President for Global Operations of Cell Signaling, to give you a little bit of an explanation as to what Cell Signaling is doing and what it intends to do with this project.
May I start chairing?
I gave you permission, yes.
I was gonna have Craig.
Yeah, he has a slide to talk to.
Okay.
You want to take my secret?
I can take that temporarily. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mark. So on behalf of CST, I want to certainly thank the board here for giving us some time. We're actually very, very excited to be here and start, begin to share with you what we have in mind. As many of you may be aware, CST has been around for almost twenty-five years now. And one thing that hasn't changed really in that twenty-five years is our scientific mission. And that is to enable scientists to better understand biology and by doing so, enable personalized medicine. Here on the North Shore, we develop and manufacture products that scientists all over the world use on a daily basis. And this allows them to better understand diseases and disease biology for many diseases that commonly afflict us, including cancer, diabetes, Alzheimer's disease. And it's through a better understanding of disease that ultimately enables scientists to develop better therapies and therefore improve, you know, human lives. We've been extremely fortunate here on the North Shore to be very successful. The demand for our products continues to increase and, you know, we're very proud of our mission and what we've been able to accomplish so far. It does mean, though, that we need to expand our facilities. We're rapidly outgrowing or have outgrown those facilities that we have in Beverly and Danvers. And we do need to, to expand. But just as important as our scientific mission, we also, you know, are very proud of the Colm family, the CST employees, and certainly myself, are proud of our other values in terms of support of the community, both local and more broadly, and our commitment to sustainability. And I think what you're gonna see tonight, you know, from Samir and Chris, is a plan, a proposal that brings all those together. It will meet our scientific needs for expanded space to deliver more products to our customers around the world. It will enable us to attract and retain the best scientists in the world as well to come work up here in Manchester and develop those products for the customers that want them so badly. And we're developing a site that is heavily integrated into the community, including the MAC and other parts of it that you'll hear about, to help support the community. And it will be what we truly believe is a flagship for sustainability when it comes to life sciences. You know, we're gonna take a blighted site, restore it, and build a highly sustainable facility that we strongly believe will be, you know, something that other life science companies will look towards us, you know, as something to emulate. And it's something we're very proud of. And I know that Michael and the family are very proud of that as well in terms of all those things we want to accomplish. So with that, I will turn it over to Samir and to Chris to tell you more about what we have in mind. Thank you, Craig.
So what you just heard is actually an architect's dream to take a project that is transforming an old quarry into, into a new campus for life science research. And summarizing what we took from Craig's description of the mission of the company is that they are as committed to the environment as they are to the excellent science and products that they produce and committed to integrating into the community. So in our submission, which happened last summer, that was the key thing that we focused on. And we said, architecture and landscape can actually address these. So the goals for the project is to create this innovative campus for the next, the future, I don't know how many years, but the future of CST. And the site offers a unique opportunity with the sort of existing granite cliff, great views out towards the hills beyond. And the mission was to meet net zero for both the building and the site. That's not an easy task. We're gonna know more about it. Definitely the goal. And then the fostering of the well-being of the employees is key in our thinking about design and it drives perfectly with the culture that Michael and CST is trying to achieve. I would mention from the team, we have over twenty consultants on this, top of the kind of line, very knowledgeable and capable consultants. I mentioned two, Michael Van Valkenburg, represented here by Chris, our world-renowned landscape architects that we've worked with before, and BR plus A. BR plus A, one of the also very well-known mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers. And we are teamed with them on several projects that really push the envelope on environment, environmental issues, including energy. Together, we got the co-top ten award for our MIT project. MIT, that now that some of you know.
Are we blocking the view of the screen?
You know what's blocking, actually, is the smaller Zoom window, isn't it?
It's the small bar, the three small bars on top of the screen. I think it's at the Zoom commander's level.
There you go. So this is the site, definitely a scarred landscape. That is what we would call a post-industrial quarry. And surrounded, this is the Manchester Athletic Club.
It's the gallery view with the screen, your screen there and you've got a small tab at the top. For all the younger people.
By the way, this facility here is kind of buttered. And actually, for us, presents a sort of a problem visually to screen it so that the development is improved and that's hidden. This is a first look at what the proposed campus might look like. Of course, the buildings in the current view are just massing, the master plan phase. So it's, they're, by no means they are a design. But it is the idea of creating a campus, a parking garage, that is being put on the table with a loop road around. And we'll get into more details of the components of the master plan. This is the view looking towards Boston. Boston is out there in the horizon. This is one twenty-eight, of course, and the MAC, Manchester Athletic Club. And you can see so much of this is, has been disturbed land for the operation of the quarry. And the proposal is to restore all that and use it as a campus. This is just the view from that side. Along the edge, we're trying to berm up and plant to shield visually as much as possible of a butter industrial property right here. The buildings are actually cascading over the cliff. So part of the buildings and the campus would be sitting high up on the, what we call the upper meadow. And they will cascade down and terrace towards the lower part. That becomes a sort of a quad and a garden, a quarry garden for the campus. The property is forty-eight acres. A lot of it will be left as preserved forest. There's twenty-nine acres maintained. The reddish zone is nineteen acres, and that's what we're calling the development. Development is less than that immediately, but we are restoring a bit of the east side. So that's, we will be touching that area to restore it. And with that, I pass it on to Chris to talk about the.
Thanks, Samir. A little bit far away from my reading glasses.
Thanks so much for the forward, by the way.
Great. So this is the illustrative master plan that we've been working on now for the past six months, really identifying the major components of the project. And it is just a master plan at the moment. As Samir mentioned, the buildings are just massing at the moment. And I would say the landscape too is here for illustrative purposes, but it certainly identifies the key components of the scheme. So first of all, you'll notice that the Manchester Athletic Club is untouched. They will go on operating as they do now. And we are using the existing main entrance that comes up on the north side of the MAC into the quarry area as our main entrance. New plantings and reducing some of the asphalt, but you'll come in the same way as you do right now. And then proceed up an existing track to what we call the upper meadow, which is where the main entrance, the drop-off area is, the lobby for the building. And you can see that the building is, is split into two phases. Phase one, on the right-hand side, would be built along with the lobby. And then phase two, on the left-hand side, would follow a few years later. We have a loop driveway that connects all the main elements of the project. That will be used for employees arriving, at work and leaving, for service. But also, very importantly, it would be a public driveway that leads to a trail, a new trailhead with parking and the public will be invited in to, to the campus. And will be able to access all the trails in the woods to the north. We do have a garage, which will serve both phase one and phase two. It's four floors and we've tucked it down into the low area of the quarry so that it's low-profile in sight and surrounded by new evergreen trees and landscape. We, we have, as Samir mentioned, berms along the north side of the site, which would serve to screen our neighbors. I think I just did the wrong.
Moving on.
So zooming in. Yeah, zooming in here. So in terms of infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, we're trying to minimize what we call gray infrastructure, underground concrete pipes, and do it through green infrastructure, sort of visible stormwater components in the landscape itself. So you can. So you can see the swale just tucked in there between the buildings, which will collect rainwater from the building roofs and paved areas, and will guide that water down towards a series of rain gardens to slow down the stormwater flow and to clean up the water before it's released into Sawmill Brook. And Charlie Weir from Hancock will be talking in more detail about the sustainability aspects of that plan. You'll notice that the existing woodland remains untouched, and we've really concentrated the new development in the nineteen acres of post-industrial land, the previously disturbed land. And as Samir mentioned, we're restoring part of that, planting it with meadow as a possibility for future development and future buildings in... What am I? Oh, okay.
Wrong button. Not intuitive.
Okay, got it, got it. Page down. So, yeah, this highlights the different types of landscape, both that we see on sites at the moment and our approach to the campus design. So there is an extensive existing woodland on site, shown here as number one, it's beautiful. There are trails there already that people use. They have to run the gauntlets of the quarry, of the industrial operations going on out there right now, but we'll be providing parking and new trails to access that area. The meadow planting shown here in yellow consists of that future area where we'd be cleaning up the quarry in sort of random piles of material, loming it, planting wellflower meadow, as well as restoring the meadow up on top, which is really beautiful and is shown here in the photo down below. The campus landscape, as I mentioned, will be on the previously disturbed site, and the Manchester Athletic Club will be undisturbed. So just zooming out a little bit, this shows you how this can become an important access point for the monoliths, fully known as the Agassiz Rocks, I think, owned by the trustees. And we will be providing both trails from the MAC parking lot, but also new parking here at the trailhead with pathways that will connect through to that. And you can see there's fifteen parking spaces in our plan. This is a plan on the right-hand side that will be open to the public. Okay, I did it again. Yeah, and just to overlay the proposed plan on that, the public will be able to walk throughout the campus, but these are the primary access points, the trail. And we've been thinking about, you know, maybe perhaps creating a gathering place on top of the hill. That's sort of interesting. I think ad hoc activities would be the polite way of putting it, but sort of making a beautiful place where people can gather and do something other than drink beer. So to Mark's point, the one detail that we would be asking for relief through the special permit is a series of parking spaces up near the arrival and entrance lobbies. So I'm going to get the language wrong, but the sort of base condition is surface parking should be behind the 200-foot setback, and we have many hundreds of spaces that conform to that. These particular 22 parking spaces do cross the 200-foot setback, which I believe through a special permit, we're allowed to do. Actually, we're allowed to go much closer to the property line. And the reason for this is because the driveway leading to the meadow is too steep for parking. So we come up very quickly from the MAC to the upper meadow, and then when we can flatten out the driveway so where it can be both used as parking, but it's also ADA accessible, so universally accessible, that's where we're putting these spaces. And so a few of these spaces will be for ADA parking spots. A few of them will be for drop-off and pickup. But that's the, I think, the totality of what we're asking relief on. And when viewed from Route 128, because of its elevated position, the roadway and the cars won't be visible, and Samir has some material that will explain that. So the project and the building will be built in two phases. This is the extent of the first phase. So you can see the right-hand side of the building, the lobby, the loop driveway, half of the garage, and then critically, the access to the public trailhead. So that would be one of the very first things that we do. So the public will be able to use that, they'll be able to walk around the site. And then in phase two, we have two discrete areas that would be fenced off. The campus would operate undisturbed, and the public access would be undisturbed. And that's when we build the western side of the building, complete the quarry garden, and complete the garage.
So as I mentioned, the kind of goal of net zero development, both on the building and on the site, is a challenge, but this is a summary of what we're thinking of achieving to get there. CSD has also asked us to certify at least gold for LEED, but we're likely going to get to platinum, or at least we're going to push towards that. We're going to use LEED zero, which is kind of a newer LEED certification, and of course, weld. The different features that are incorporated and will be part of this is the solar photovoltaics, definitely on top of the garage, but maybe integrated into the building as well to maximize the area. We will increase the visibility and transparency in transient space. It's not where people are sitting all the time, so the heat gain issue is not much of a problem. But we do want, for creating the culture that CSD needs, we want people to look outside and enjoy nature, and for people to see each other working on a campus. But having those in areas that are not exposing us to heat gain is important. Horizontal shades and overhangs on the south facade, it's to minimize the same issue of heat gain and glare. And then we're going to use ground-source heat pump in a closed loop. That would primarily be within the bottom of the quarry. And we're thinking that that would serve full development, phase one and phase two. Indoor and outdoor connection is key, so possibilities to exit the building at the different levels, out to the meadow, down to the quarry garden. And as you can see, the buildings in general, again, not designed, but they're terracing to traverse that about forty feet of elevation difference between the upper meadow and the lower base. By filic design of having, bringing nature in and connection from the building outside will is key to our thinking. And higher SRI roof to minimize heat absorption. All of these are key to kind of getting the certification, but also, in addition to what is required, bird-safe glass. Wherever we have good expanses of glass, we'll be making sure to specify bird-safe. Access to daylight and views is very important to the well-being of people, as well as connected spaces vertically and horizontally. So walking, seeing all your peers and where they work, and being able to connect with them is part of this, achieving this culture of collaboration. Stormwater management is a big part of our thinking. And here, I would like to ask Charlie, you're from Hancock, to tell us about what the pieces that we're looking at.
Sure. I think it's worth, you know, mentioning what, you know, what are we protecting? You know, the land to the north is owned by the trustees. Sawmill Brook, which is an important, an important resource for the town, runs right to the west of the property, especially down there. And to the north, which is...
They disappear on the screen.
So that's to the north. Now, the Sawmill Brook is actually a cold-water fishery that smelts, and actually trout come up in this area. And to the north and the trustees is the Beaver Dam Swamp. So those are all the resources that we're, you know, we're really looking to protect and enhance. The site today is not protecting or enhancing those at all. It's a, you know, it's a source of sediment, a source of pollutants that come from the site. So even if we did just the planting, which is Chris's, you know, work, just that planting is going to be a huge improvement to the site. But we require that as part of this project to meet the mass D E P stormwater management standards. But beyond that, we're going to do a lot more than just meet the standards. We're going to be LEED certified. As Samir mentions, we'll be looking at, the LEED requirements are above and beyond mass D E P requirements. Not that there's anything wrong with mass D E P requirements, they're very good. They don't incorporate things like future climate change. They also are more rigorous on removal of phosphorus, for example. We're proposing, as I mentioned at the bottom of this picture, we're proposing two ponds. One is a rain garden, the other one's probably an infiltration basin. And then reaching out from that along the front of the building, you can see there's some blue in there. That will be a series of, you know, it's really water quality swale or a series of actually smaller rain gardens we're still working on. As Samir mentioned, his buildings are still a work in progress. The stormwater is also, you know, a collection of ideas. We've been developing models around this over the last few months, but we're really starting to get our head into it there. There'll also be some, likely will be some, you know, subsurface infiltration basins on the site, you know, under the roadways or under the burn, for example. And whatever else we need, we sometimes use for wood-technical units and things of that nature. So all of those things are on the table. And I think that's, I'll try to wrap that up and get it back to these guys.
In continuing the different aspects of the building and the site that will help us achieve that goal, we're looking very closely at the embodied carbon in the material choices. So we're thinking of mass timber structure for parts of the building. We've done this on different lab buildings. Labs don't like mass timber too much because of raiding and control areas for chemical quantities and things. So we use that mass timber in areas like the lobby and the circulation spine within the building, but a transition to steel and concrete. And we're looking into concrete that is low-carbon mixes as well. Of course, steel, the same. And healthier materials across the board. There's plenty of lists that we adhere to, a red list of materials Harvard developed and other lists that we have. And actually, CSD's lead sustainability person comes from Harvard, so he knows what we're supposed to use and not. And EV charging is a must nowadays. It's not like, you know, already you count the number of cars at CSD's campus that need it. We would definitely be looking to maximize those. And from all this, what we hope to bring across is this idea that it is turning this quarry into a campus that is walkable, pedestrian-friendly. It attracts people, you know, there's a big competition. And I hope, once, scientists to come here and be wild and excited to come and work at this place with athletic facilities nearby, easy to walk around, take a stroll. So this, what drives all of this is not just checking what is required from architects. It is really coming together holistically to create a place that everybody in CSD, us and the town, will be proud of. Now, specifically on the zoning envelope for the height, we have been studying tons of options, and every time we have to run the average-grade calculation, it's complicated because we're sitting up high and down low. And we have one person, her name is Quina, and she's the queen of the average metrics. She's constantly calculating. I hope she doesn't quit, because... But basically, we need the full height, your fifty-five plus fifteen exactly gives us what we need for lab building, fifteen-foot floor-to-floor, enough to support the systems. And we also looked very closely at something we heard is a concern to the town, which is views from 128. How would this development be viewed, both in the summer and in winter, during the day and at night? And for that, this is the same view, a little bit, but a bit closer. But going to this idea of the view from 128, it was something that CSD asked us to focus on. And what we've developed to study it, convince ourselves, and be able to convince everybody that where we place things and the height we place them at will not be visible. We have an animation that helps visualize that. And if you, yeah, no audio, but... So here's, kind of flying over to 128. It is, let me actually stop sharing and do another share that allows video to be better viewed. So give me a sec. So I do share with, if nobody knows this trick, optimize for video. And then share, you get a much better animation. So here it is. So the first view is looking, bird's-eye view at the garage and the development. The garage is sitting in a valley, and the drop between where the garage sits and where we drive on 128 is so high that you can, you don't see it. Similarly, northbound on 128, the development on the meadow is only two floors high, so it is quite a drop down. And these two views are actually what we define as the weak points in visibility from 128. There's two points, and that's where the trees are less evergreen, and then there's a thinning of the amount of trees. Of course, in our planting diagrams, we'll be trying to put evergreens to even shield it more, especially at night. And this animation we can do in the future with night simulation just to see that there's no light pollution from any of the development towards... And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. In addition to those who have spoken, we have Peter Mudo, who's facilities director, and Peter Bordeaux, who's been working with the town. And if you want to pose questions, we're here to respond.
The ventilation for a lab, did I see any HVAC in your drawings? Is that something that is both covered and hidden? And the lab and the ventilation of a lab, is that an issue?
We go to... So we haven't got into the design of that, but I can tell you that the current thinking is there will be a portion of the penthouse that will be enclosed for things that need service, and you don't want it in the snow. But we have a screen around, do you screen anything visually? That is the exhaust. So the exhaust units will probably sit outside, and they'll have the stacks that blend the air. And so those will be sitting out here. Where exactly and how tall they need to be and all that will be, we'll have to come back to you with the information on when development happens.
And the current site plan, is there a lot of, are you doing a lot of cut, rock cut? Or is it more fill, or is it cut? How much rock?
We're trying to balance for both, for practical reasons and financial reasons. We're trying to balance the cut and fill on the site. So there will be a little bit of rock removal as we sit into the cliff. You have to just flatten the rock and take some off. Of course, we want to screen the Brady property to the north, and we will use that excavated material to burn and then plant on top of it. And Chris, describe what we're doing with this area to...
Yeah, there's a lot of sort of miscellaneous...
Yeah, there's a lot of miscellaneous mounds of material out there. So we have to talk with the current operator, what he wants to take away, what he's going to leave. At the moment, we've assumed that most of those are gone. But if they're not, we can use them and, you know, to, for cost reasons, but also to reduce truck traffic and time. We really want to move the earth around on the site and balance it ourselves. We'll be bringing in a lot of horticultural soils, obviously, and specialist soils for, you know, infiltration, that kind of thing. But generally, we're trying to balance it.
Okay, I'll start with you, Chris.
So how high from the highest point of the site will the building be above that?
In the highest?
Yeah, so the highest elevation, ground elevation.
Ground elevation, which is what we call the upper meadow.
New meadow.
Yeah. To the top roof of the penthouse, whatever size that penthouse will end up being. It'll be 50 feet. Two floors of 15 plus a penthouse that we are, as I say, saying, plan on 20. We can squeeze it down, but to do the amount of heat recovery that they would like, height becomes necessary. So this is what we're allowing. And that keeps us within that envelope we described of the average weight to the zoning height limit.
Okay, my second question, the elephant in the room, I guess, is municipal services to this complex? And that includes Atwater Avenue, is that going to require improvements? Is there going to be water and sewer connections? That sort of thing we have to think about.
The water and sewer is, we've been working with the D P W director and also the town engineer. And the plan is we, there are, there are sleeves that run under 128 over to Mill Street. And actually, that's where the MAC is connected to now with water is actually through that sleeve. We're planning to improve that and to run up Mill and then all the way up Forest Street. And also to bring the sewer that way, we'd install a pump station and then run the sewer back to the gravity line. That is the ideal, again, working with, you know, with the folks in D P W and engineering. And Gillette's the best place to go with it because the sewer is less, is less taxed on that side of town. And then electric, I believe the improved electric will be coming up at water. The, we'll have a traffic engineer on the project to assess at water. I've driven up and down that street now. I, I don't think there used to be any improvements to that street for the purpose of accessibility. It's, it's pretty wide now, so. But we'll have our traffic engineer, we'll look at that as well.
Okay.
The electric run underground?
I believe it does, you know.
It will, it will run up, it'll probably come overhead, over the hill and underground of Atwater Avenue.
So?
I just, I work in this industry, but I think when you, when we're coming to public hearing and maybe for the purposes of people paying attention here, it would be helpful for you to just explain what LEED means, LEED gold, LEED platinum, well, standards, embodied carbon, ground source heat pumps. So, because people don't always understand that. So I think it would be helpful, maybe just to get a quick, or certainly when you go forward, to make sure you're using those words that people understand so that we get benefit of good public comment on the sort of even playing field of knowledge. I mean, you may want to take two minutes and just explain those.
Yeah, so LEED is the, what does it stand for?
Leadership of Energy.
But it, it, it is a certification that you go after and it has a number of credits that you get by activities you do. And there's thresholds of silver, gold, and platinum. And each few years, it gets harder to do because they're pushing the envelope and they keep pushing it. So everybody is driven towards doing better each time. The same with local codes, right? So the stretch code with Manchester is under. It's just constantly a moving target. So we're constantly having to, like, we can't just settle and say, this will do it. It is always a challenge to get those credits. And to achieve LEED platinum, like within the M I T's building, which was a heavy lab, it's a clean room, the largest clean room facility for research in the country. You have to really do your research and understand exactly how do you tighten the energy requirement? And how do you turn it down when it's? So energy is huge in labs because labs require a lot of air coming in and going out. And you're kind of heating and cooling that. So that's LEED.
Can I just?
Yeah.
So there's a landscape component. It's, it's all around sustainability and environmental responsibility, basically. And I also don't remember what the acronym is, but protecting nature, low carbon, healthy place to live and work.
The challenge for us on LEED that's, is that we don't get the credits you get when you're in the city and you got mass transportation and the. So here, we need every point possible on all other fronts. So it is a challenge to get to gold and, but obviously a challenge we look forward to. And well is also a certification system that is focused on the well-being and the points you get for people healthy within the building. It ties to the idea of views, nature, daylighting, coming in, movement, encouraging movement, et cetera. A project we just completed at Lehigh University was awarded an award from Fitwell that we didn't ask for, we didn't submit. They simply said, you got the most credits by doing all of these things. And it have, it has things like the lighting is tied to the cycles of a human kind of, so it adjusts during the day. What's the name? Sticking, there you go. But it, and, and biophilic design, the ability to have green on the inside. And if you do want to talk about green on the inside, have you ever been to C S T's current facilities?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful greenhouse as you first walk in. We definitely want to capture that idea as well within the new facility. It's just a.
You also asked about the ground source heat pump. So the geothermal wells take advantage of the fact that deep in the ground, it's about 50 degrees year round. So you can use it for cooling in the summer and heating in the winter. You're not drawing water out of the ground, but there are closed loop that the water goes down and comes up and is a very low, low carbon way of heating and cooling buildings.
Yeah. Embodied carbon is how much CO2 is tied to the production of a specific thing. And industry and C S T are trying to move away from anything that produces more carbon. So you're, there's a way to kind of calculate what materials cost the least amount of carbon in that sense. You know, putting carbon up in the atmosphere. So that's, choices will be made based on this in our.
Thank you.
Laura?
Sure. Very interesting concepts. I'm looking forward to learning more about it. I appreciate the fairly compact nature of the development on the site and the really using that existing quarry and the grade change there to kind of nestle the building in. And I appreciate that you all used the, you've done some study on the view sheds from 128. And I want to understand that a little more. I understand, Samir, that you found some kind of weak spots where maybe things are slightly more visible. Given that, you know, that kind of steeply sloping woodland down to the, to the road may change over time and, you know, conifers may come and go. Are there, are there oblique angles where you might see in? Or if there are a lot of glass surfaces, might you see, you know, reflections at certain times? Do you need to berm for any of that?
So let me describe here that the areas that we thought are, you know, what we described, the weak point. There's an area right here that is the thinnest amount of trees between the highway. And that's the view that we tested and did the animation for. So the reason it's the weak point in our, it's just like thinner amount of wood. Of course, we can plant some more, but that will take a few years.
Sure.
Another angle is down here. There's a, there's a dip, there's a valley in the grade here. And if you stand up here, you can see the highway from this point.
Right.
So that, that view, I mean, if you stand and you want to look straight out here, I don't think you'll see it because the grades also go up. And so we, we've convinced ourselves that even in winter, or that we're saying in the summer, we get it. When, in winter, when there's no, the leaves on the trees, we convinced ourselves that, you know, the client is asking us to do that. And we're saying, we don't see it.
Yeah.
If it's at this height, you're not going to see it. And.
So that's through topography, not just the vegetation that is blocking.
It is exactly both. So.
The two views you saw, we believe are the two weakest points.
Yeah.
And the photographs are taken in December, so it's really a worst case.
So you can see the elevation of 128. Of course, it changes a little bit, but relative to where the bottom of the quarry is, is already its, its floor. Then the upper meadow, as we call it, where the cars are right here and the two-story. If you, just that yellow line of a view angle, it's just already helped by the topography.
Right.
Plus the vegetation. So we're, we're convinced and we, it's all model. We can bring the model and someone better than me.
It'd be interesting to actually see the.
Show me from this, show me from that.
Because the, you know, the oblique view kind of changes as you walk in.
Absolutely. But we, we convince ourselves, let's say, that we need to, we need everyone.
And I think that's part of, you know, as you approach Cape Ann, that wooded feel on both sides really feels like you're, you're going into a different place. It's quite unique. And so that's really important to preserve. So thank you for that. I had a few other questions regarding the site development. I know the buildings are still kind of blocks. The circulation, you seem to be taking advantage of kind of the ring road that's already there to an extent. And I understand the use below is going to stay. Is that the quarry operation or what is that used?
No, that was the neighboring, that's the neighboring property. It's a storage.
Storage property, okay.
The quarry on outside of property line.
Yeah, okay.
It's not an outdoor property.
Yeah. So if, if the site has a lot of grade change already, I'm thinking about the accessible pedestrian routes through the site, not just through the buildings, but how you actually navigate the site from a pedestrian accessible point of view.
Yeah, so.
Getting started on that.
We've kept all of the sidewalks below 5%, which is universally accessible, doesn't require handrails or landings. So that's both on the upper portion, that's all 5%.
Yeah.
And the lower portion, of course, is all 5%. Of course, you can come into the building at the low point and an elevator would be close. So the same here, you come in and it's accessible. And getting to an elevator and all through the building is, makes it all.
Just to be very clear, there's two exceptions. One is this existing sort of back driveway, if you will. And one is this, this, this existing driveway that goes from top to bottom. So they have to be below 10% for fire access.
Right.
But the accessible part of the driveway is all the way around here.
So do you have to go through the building to get from the upper part of the site to the lower as a pedestrian?
Or you can walk around the driveway. And so, yeah, if you were coming from the trails to the MAC, you would take this lower route. I mean, obviously, if you're able-bodied, you can take the upper route. There's, there's, you know, universal accessibility to all major areas of the site.
The site is clearly, I mean, I've walked around it, just looking at it. And I could see there's a lot of erosion and a lot of sedimentation, as you said. Are you all doing a baseline water quality sampling that might compare with what your projected water quality improvements are? I know people are concerned about water quality and development in general, and it might help to really quantify what.
We hadn't really, we just knew we were going to, everything we were going to do is going to be such a, you know, large improvement that we hadn't really thought of it. Usually a baseline, we think of, you've got a site which is, for example, already wooded.
Right.
And you're saying, okay, well, let's study a baseline to show that we're not really impacting the site. Certainly, we can discuss that with, but hadn't really entered our minds because it's so clearly going to be a large improvement.
That would be interesting to actually be able to save what you did as a, you know, kind of distinct conditions and improvement. And then I just had a question about the kind of approach from Atwater Ave. And MAC, I know you're saying you're not, you're not affecting it. MAC has a lot of impervious surface as well. That looks like it's probably draining off in a different direction, maybe towards 128. How do you, I mean, what's your approach to that? Do you kind of not touch it and it's a neighboring use? Or do you try to integrate it with your campus and make it more pedestrian, pedestrian and bicycle friendly and the approach from Atwater Ave? What are you, what are you thinking about that?
In the current plan, it's leave it as is for the use. And you can talk about arrangement between C S T and the MAC in terms of the operation. But we, we've talked about this before that it is an amenity that I think would be another attraction to people coming. C S T is thinking about providing membership for all employees. But we know it needs care sometime down the line. When and how, we're not doing anything currently in the plan. But large, Mike, we can talk to your vision on what might happen in the future.
Right. Right now, I think you can get there by, certainly by bike. I don't know about walking up Atwater Ave and how, you know, safe or accessible that feels in terms of just being a pedestrian getting to the MAC. So you're thinking about that whole sort of entry sequence.
I think if it weren't for the fact that there are wetlands tied to the, to Atwater Avenue, improvement by way of a sidewalk might have been considered, but.
Right, because there is no sidewalk there down.
No, it, but it's wet. And so I'm not sure the Conservation Commission would want us to fill along Atwater Avenue in order to enhance that.
Is it too narrow to? This is a detail, we don't have to get stuck on it, but just thinking about sort of pedestrian access overall as a campus.
It's right up height to the road on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
We are planting more trees around the MAC for shade and to sort of make it nestle into the campus.
Do you know about how many trees you're expecting to plant overall on the site? Just as a point of.
I could guess, but I'd rather not.
Yeah. That would be interesting to be able to.
What would you guess be?
My guess? Well, when the architects were complaining about putting trees on the model, they said there's about three or 400, so that's what they thought.
New trees?
And as I said, this, you know, this is illustrative and it depends how big the trees are and how quickly we want the screening to go in.
And they grow in rock?
They're small enough, yeah, it's a good point.
Well, we are importing, we'll be importing a lot of manufactured horticultural soil.
On top of any rock, you'll have a layer.
Right, thank you.
Just, can I just, to that, you might check with the Black Earth people. I don't know what, if they have a market for their soil, but they're a local company that's, you know, composting our own food and waste, so.
Yeah, we will, we will have our own soil consultants.
And my last question for now was about the garage footprint. And you're showing TVs on top of that. So you're not thinking about the garage as the, as the future expansion site building footprint? You're talking about it in the meadow.
Yeah, the area, the, the area that's now sort of full of those piles of stuff. We would clean it up, seed it, and then sort of back and get the future.
The garage is thought of as a two-phase thing that is kind of a pre-plant type garage. To keep it also low floor to floor and not seen from 128, so that it's like, I have the P Ds. So it is currently not thought of as, and it won't be structured to, you know, turn it into a usable building because of that. Definitely not labs, because of that 11 foot floor to floor. And there's no talk of anything that can sit on top of it because then you'll see it from 128. And that is not the charge. So the, the thinking about the garage is making it close and having the possibility of people having A D A access from one level of the garage or more to the building. to the building out of inclement weather. Of course, we're gonna make it a, a pretty nice walk, five percent slope to, for people to walk out, and we want people walking outside more than inside, but we're, we're providing both uh options.
Will any of the um EV parking that's in the garage or on the site be publicly accessible? For people just coming to visit? Or is it for employees only?
Uh, we haven't gotten to that.
That's very, it is, it is currently.
Yeah, we've got a lot of existing.
Okay, yeah.
People come just to. Off in half-hours.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mary?
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna ask a couple um follow-up questions to ones that were already asked and then a few additional ones. Um, what is the elevation from one twenty-eight to the top of the building?
Oh, I don't have that numeric number. Uh, off the top, can we get back to you on that?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't wanna guess. It's fifty from the meadow up the elevation, up on the meadow is a hundred. Yeah, it's only elevation.
Is one twenty-eight varies.
Yeah.
So roughly, you know, what, um, whatever the ground level is there, so. So you're elevate, the hill is elevated up and then, so I guess how tall, tall is that hill, basically? I can look it on G, G S, okay.
Well, we'll get that in answer.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, follow up on Ron's question with the HVAC. Is there, will there be visible smoke coming from them?
Um. The answer, I think, is no. I just wanna think of everything that we may.
Not steam.
It's not, yeah, it won't be smoke as in, we're, this is gonna be uh all-electric as a facility. If there's anything, uh, it'll be for emergency backup, uh, gas boilers. Uh, but that's not any smoke. Uh, there's a, uh, there would be a generator for emergency power. Uh, but that's true of any facility. Uh, they have a stack to exhaust typically the fumes. So I, um, and the cooling uh is air. There, there isn't, sometimes you see on buildings, uh, uh, kind of more like evaporation, uh, steam uh from cooling towers. This would be air to air uh cooling, so it's not water that creates steam.
So we wouldn't see something from one twenty-eight, the steam.
No, no, you're not gonna see a chimney of anything.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. Um, will there be blasting?
Um, so we are removing some rock. How to do it? Um, it is still, we need to talk to the CM about how they um intend to do it. What we've heard so far, it's more cutting. Uh, we're trying to avoid um blasting. Uh, but we don't know the answer exactly right now. The, the, um, so it's, it's another one of those things that we should.
I think uh a lot more will be known and available at the public hearing.
Okay.
So.
We.
I'd like to answer the questions.
Yeah, address.
Uh, they'll come fully armed.
Sure, okay. Um, so there's, there's obviously a known electricity capacity on Cape Anne in many areas. Um, how is that being addressed with this project for the town?
Uh, Charles, I think you know more.
National Griders Assured Us That They Could Serve, um, Service For Three Megawatts Power. They're, they're currently rebuilding their East Gloucester Substation. When that's complete, this summer, they'll have available capacity down in the West Gloucester Substation, which will serve this property with only, I think it's a matter of half a dozen poles or something like that uh that they'll need to add to serve this property.
Okay, so you don't have to hook into the Beverly.
We are not making any upgrades for Manchester Beverly.
Okay.
Does the solar provide any supplement to the, the panel grid or not? Not really.
No, it will, obviously, it provides some supplement, but, but not. Yeah, no, yeah, it's only a small fraction of the power.
You'll do demand response, right?
Uh, just one last question. Uh, just the last question. So we saw the phase one and the phase two, and then you have the meadow area. Um, and that will be for future development. Um, I'm wondering if any of this land is going into conservation land?
Uh, you might recall that John Donovan actually gave thirty acres, which is the back part of this, to the Trustees of Reservations. So those trails go through part of what used to be quarry property. Uh, but at this point, uh, even though there's not, the project doesn't anticipate development in the northern section. Uh, there's really no reason to consider that. We're just maintaining the existing trails.
Okay, so none of this forty-nine acres is currently slated for conservation?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Christina?
Okay. Um, I really do appreciate the view shed from one twenty-eight. I think that was a big concern when we were all talking about this rezoning. So thank you. Um, I think from one of the slides, could you put the phasing, the last one, I think that flipped back to something else rather quickly. I didn't get a chance to look at that.
This phasing?
No, the very end. I think the last one.
Uh, the last one, which is uh just the.
Exactly.
Climate thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't talk.
Yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to take a look at that. So when do you want to break ground?
Um, well, we think construction on the buildings would start uh July twenty-four. But uh we do anticipate that there will be some enabling projects ahead of that. And utilities in one of them, any uh, you know, um, work on earth excavation. So Columbia uh made a note to us that before this date, we will likely be wanting to do some prep work to receive it.
All right, and I think I answered one of my questions from going back and looking at a slide. Number of employees is about five, four, sixty total.
Yeah, that would probably, that'd be about the number of um, say, seating available for that. You know, we do, we, we would anticipate ultimately having probably a bit higher number of total employees. But we are, like many companies, um, for people who typically work in offices, we are relatively hybrid in nature as well. So that reduces the, the need for, you know, permanent seating.
So typical hours of operation?
Um, well, for the majority of people, it's sort of a nine-to-five, you know, situation. We do have um, some starting a bit earlier. We do maintain um, you know, toes or facility in Beverly. Our warehouse is open to eight P M. But that is not planned for this. It's strictly R and D and office.
You're not anticipating like twenty-four hours.
No, absolutely not. So the typical workday, most, the vast majority of people would be out of the building um by five and six at the latest with very few, relatively few people there at nights and occasionally on the weekends. But it's pretty much a daytime only time.
Last question.
Will building be lit all night?
Uh, limited lighting.
Imagine.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so I believe that you are a level-two laboratory?
Correct.
Is that correct? Is there any anticipation of going to a level-three at this facility?
Not at this point.
What does that mean? What does that mean, exactly?
Uh, we have, we have no plans to go to anything, you know, higher than that. It currently meets all of our needs for us and our customers. So, uh, you know, that, that is not at all.
The building is not designed for more than we assume to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Betsy, do you have any comments?
Um, I'm Betsy Ware. I'm the interim planner. Um, and the process for this would be, once you submit your application, it's gonna be a little different than what's been done in the past, where staff and board members um and have provided comments. Uh, we will be having, instead, we'll be having a series of meetings um with your group to basically sit down, go around the table, understand what the issues are, try to hash out various issues. Uh, I've done this process in a number of communities. It works very well.
Yeah, and we do understand that the site plan approval process uh gives you an opportunity to hire consultants at our expense to review the materials that we're presenting to you. So we would anticipate that. And uh, we would also anticipate that Paul Orlando may not be the inspector of this building. Uh, there may be some, some other firm that uh performs that function.
Especially with the new stretch code. Especially with a new stretch code. That, which is a enhanced building code, which is now in effect. Could. Energy.
Mary?
Could Betsy explain what she said about the permitting process? I'm not clear on that.
So commonly what happens right now is that um the planning board gets an application. They ship it out to everybody and they ask for comments. When I arrived here three months ago, you didn't get a lot of comments on a couple of the special permit applications. Um, what I'm suggesting that staff do is sit down with the applicants and everybody try to put in writing what they should be putting in writing in terms of their concerns. If they don't put it in writing, they're sitting at a table to explain their concerns. So that, then what happens is I write a staff memo to this board, which explains what are the outs, what we've talked about, what, what issues have been resolved or issues that are concerned from various departments, um, and any outstanding issues. And then that memo comes to this board.
Maybe we should formalize this new special permit process?
Right, and there, this will be a special permit hearing.
Right.
Which may, which may stretch over.
Right, so, so what would happen is the first public hearing for this project, you would have a very detailed email, um, memo from all the town staff, which basically explains what are the outstanding issues, what issues have been resolved, just the basics all the way down.
Okay.
And if, so for example, if it's determined that there's nobody in town hall that um is capable of doing the tra, reviewing the traffic study, we might wanna hi, there might be a recommendation in that memo for a traffic study. Or there might be a recommendation for somebody who's gonna analyze the blasting. Or, you know, something like that.
That sounds like a good idea because oftentimes we don't get comments from.
Right, exactly.
Fire chief for the police or the CONCOM.
So in April, you plan to have more quantified design with quantities and uh.
So.
Is that your plan in two months to have that with better?
That's the plan. Um, but we uh are aware that, as uh you're saying, that there will be things that you ask us to dive into and bring you a visual study on. Uh, we won't have all of that. So for us, it's our initial presentation uh explaining more about the design of the buildings than what you see here, which is mainly the master plan. Uh, so there's the, um, so there's a site plan approval, and then there's the special permit for the actual uh, the buildings.
For the use. A special permit for the use.
For the use, yeah. Um, the strip, the permit for the building happens, actually.
And then we'll have public input also.
But we, uh, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we anticipate that it will be an iterative process that we meet.
Right.
Uh, and we bring you back whatever you ask for and we, uh, so April for us is the first step.
Okay.
In, in that process.
Are you meeting with other boards in town?
Well, the only, uh, Peter Gordo's been meeting with Chuck Dam to discuss uh the sewer and water issues. Uh, we have been meeting on a regular basis with a representative from the Board of Select People, uh, Selectmen.
You plan to meet with the fire department and companies. And that, and you're from CONCOM.
What about CONCOM?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
CONCOM has been, uh, we're in what's in the middle of right now what's called in the N-RAN process. We're there, which is not talking about any of what we're proposing. It's them agreeing with our, um, with our line, with our wetlands line and what areas are protectable. And then we'll, we plan to run this parallel with filing with the claim, with file with the commission at the same time for, for whatever conditions.
Any other board?
Yeah, I just had a.
Laura.
I'm sorry. Um, I was thinking more about this as we were talking about the CONCOM and the kind of environmental impacts of the site. And um, at a, you know, if you zoom out a little bit, the connectivity of the site, given that it's either abutting or um close to other large wooded tracks or conservation land, um, I'm wondering if the team has given any thought to working with a wildlife biologist in terms of habitat connectivity. Who would also just be interested, interesting to see, you know, for trail connectivity, for, for people's use, you know, how it kind of fits within larger trail network. But particularly where, you know, where we have a lot of adjacent wetlands, we have a lot of adjacent habitat. It's um, it's important to do what you're doing already with trees and, and native plantings and all of that. But it's hard, I think it's hard for us as landscape architects to say, yes, this provides the connectivity. And so having a scientist on the team who could really evaluate that, I think would be really valuable, if it's something that you all would consider.
Great idea. I think we'll look into that.
Great, thank you.
So I'm Mark. I assume you know that the AG is about to approve, I hope, the zoning amendments that we did last November, which include a new site plan review set of standards?
Yes.
So you've seen them in your.
Yes. Well, thank you for the heads up, though.
Any other comments from the board?
Sarah?
Um, just in the, the question of Atwater Avenue, I think, um, uh, I'm wondering if there's a way that a traffic person, traffic engineer might uh look at a bike lane. Or, you know, even just a straight lane, some way to traffic calm and to increase um, the biking safety um on that road.
Yeah, we have tons of people who bike to work.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and it's encouraging your, and then the other question I have is, is there a cafeteria in this building? So of course, we're gonna want, we, we hope that your uh staff will also frequent our downtown. Um, and so obviously, that's, you know, you're gonna want a cafeteria on site, but um.
It's a double-edged sword.
Yes, of course.
Because some people may be worried about traffic downtown.
I know, but the merchants downtown certainly like that. So, yeah, we have a wonderful downtown.
Yeah, it could be a shuttle.
But it's, it's also presently a wonderful cafeteria. I'm sure it's gonna get even better.
Your best espresso on the north shore.
I've eaten.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's probably.
Yeah, quick comment, sure.
Yeah, I did, I do, thank you. I'm John Lloyd. Thank you. We call it road. Um, it's nice to see things in their pre sort of state or early stage because um, you have to make changes if one of your two-part on the road. A lot of comments were made here, we're pretty, we're, we're spot on. Um, I had a number of observations that I wanted to just share with you, not necessarily looking for the answer, but I would take considerations and to go to your next level of design.
Can you be brief?
First, a bit from the writing, could you?
Well, um, yeah, I guess, I guess I'll be brief and I can follow up on writing because I think they're probably substantive issues. Um, I think, you know, we've talked, one thing I would talk about is the, the sewer. I know it seems like a foregone conclusion that there's a sewer hookup. I'm not sure the town can afford that. I'm not sure we're gonna pay for it. Um, I know, understand one process is in progress to ask for grants that may or may not come through, but that would probably would also cause our zoning on town to change in our case. I think that's presumptuous to rely on those sorts of things. Um, you could probably put parking under your buildings and take some of the parking away and do a little bit of change around, make a septic, septic field possible, your own treatment plant. Um, the, along with that, the traffic, Atwater Ave is a lot of joggers up and down that road. That is not a, just a bike path. I see people running up and down all the time on a map in the. Um, so I think it's a huge issue relative to public safety on Atwater Ave, not withstanding the wetlands, but that's your challenge to sort of solve. Um, the um, the um, site lighting, we talked a little about that, obviously, for the, um, you know, for the animals, et cetera. The um, other concern I had was just traffic litigation in general, probably from a trip today coming out of that corner. Um, we're gonna do it on, on School Street there for D cell lanes, uh, turnoff lanes, et cetera. Obviously, nobody wants to see a traffic light there, but that kind of traffic load might be actually causing that. So your traffic engineering, I think. So your traffic engineering, I think the, the town should get peer reviewers.
We're gonna have peer review of traffic, sewer, all that stuff, soon we are.
And those were, you know, some of the, some of the key issues I talked about. I think the sewer one's a big one. I, I just don't think that's, should be taken for granted. I think there should be some investigations on, on-site treatment, um, given the size of your site, uh, and the opportunities with the grades and the existing stuff you gotta remove anyway. Um, and consider, again, consider maybe to put some parking underneath, reduce that parking. Just, just some quick thoughts, but I can follow up the writing and the writing and the consideration. Joe, I'm out there for your thoughts, so the town has a good, has a great outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in. We'll see you again in a couple of months.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.